Good afternoon, I'm Wes Leinberger, Executive Director of Communications for NACADOTUS ISD. This is a special meeting of the NISD Board of Trustees conducted remotely using the Zoom app. Today's open session is being recorded and will be shared afterwards on the district's YouTube account. I will now turn the meeting over to NISD Board President Pam Fitch. Ms. Fitch?
Thank you, Mr. Leinberger. All right, good afternoon. I hereby call this special meeting of the NACADOTUS ISD Board of Trustees by video conference to order. A quorum of the following board members is present. Please indicate your presence by saying hi when I call your name. Vice President James Montoya.
Here.
Here.
Secretary Mindy Winslow.
Here.
Leah Beth App.
Here.
The Reverend James Irvin.
Dr. Tyrell Gromon.
Here.
And Mr. Farshid Miramah.
Here.
Thank you all for being with us today. On March 16th, Governor Greg Abbott granted a request by Attorney General Tim Paxton to temporarily suspend a limited number of open meetings laws to the extent necessary to allow telephone or video conference meetings in response to the coronavirus. In accordance with those suspended rules, we certify. Notice of this meeting has been posted online for at least 72 hours. Although members of the board are not gathered in a central physical location, we do have a quorum and attendance at this meeting by video conference. We are meeting by use of the Zoom software application, which allows two-way communication for members of the public. As we would at any in-person meeting, members of the public who have followed the instructions on the meeting notice for registering to speak during the public comment portion will be given that opportunity. All other meeting procedures will adhere to board adopted procedures to the extent practical. An audio recording of this meeting is being made and will be available to the public at a later date. And the Zoom software application does allow for people to view and interact. I want to apologize in advance for any unforeseeable difficulties that we may experience and please ask for your patience as we navigate the online digital world. If you have any questions about these suspended laws, please call the Office of the Attorney General at 888-672-6787 or by email at t o m a at o a g dot texas dot gov. The first item on our agenda today is to hear public comments. Those wishing to address the board have emailed a request in advance of today's meeting. We have two requests for public comment today. The time limit will be three minutes for each person addressing the board, and Mr. Michael Martin will keep time. The first person to address the board today, and I will remind everyone under our newly adopted public comment policy that public comment at special called meetings does need to pertain to agenda items on today's agenda. Open public comment for general public comments would be taken at regular board meetings. So the first person that I'm going to call on today is Janeth Allen. Are you with us, Janeth? And I've got that you're going to speak about items 3A and 3B.
Okay, yes. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, so you ready for us?
Okay, great.
I'm ready.
Hello, President Fitch, trustees, I'm sorry, Fitch trustees and Dr. Travilla. My name is Janeth Allen. I am an elementary teacher and a proud advocate of my profession and all students. I'm speaking today on behalf of members of Texas AFT. We agree with you and so many other school administrators who are honest with the public when they admit there will be outbreaks. However, we believe our district and our community can do better by at least shortening and slowing the spread. The easiest way to prevent outbreaks and slow down the community's spread is to limit in-person gatherings. We want to gather with our students for their benefit, for the benefit of our community, for the economy, and for the mental health benefits all of us could use right now. But the data suggests that we must slow down. Please do not postpone only the first day of instruction, but please postpone online professional development, staff meetings and trainings. Every opportunity we have to prevent indoor gatherings is an opportunity to slow down the virus, the spread. We are participating in this meeting virtually for a reason, to slow down the spread. So why risk the health of those you're counting on to educate your children? It is not worth it. We can have our PD and meetings virtually, especially since the district is considering technology to help the teachers with their virtual needs. Recently, other members of AFT have addressed you and many of us followed with letters. And we pleaded for a virtual seat with you at the table in the planning and reopening of our district. And thank you to all of you that replied. We were assured that teachers are being included in the planning. We've tried but have been unable to verify who, if any, are truly involved. But we did, however, verify that the policies of our district advisory council had not been followed. After last week's request, some staff received invitations to review district plans and to submit questions regarding those plans. Our members asked if they could participate virtually, but were told no. Thank you for making sure some teachers were allowed to submit questions regarding those plans. We look forward to hearing your answers to these questions and many more. This is because we have spent months running scenarios through our minds because we are the ones that navigate, educate, nurture, and keep our students safe. As professional educators with the most recent direct experience with students, we understand how difficult our questions will be to answer. But we know these questions must have detailed answers before you require us to the public servant who will be risking our health, our savings, our retirement accounts, and possibly our lives to come to campus when community spread is not only on a downward trend. Our questions arise out of concern. Some fear yes, because we are the ones with the experience to require to truly understand how difficult it will be to keep the students safe. Education is our duty, but student safety is our foremost responsibility. Thank you very much. And you need us as much as our students do. And thank you for your time and your advice in service to our district. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us today. We appreciate your comments. Our second speaker today will be Mrs. Amber Seal. She will also address items 3A and 3B.
Good afternoon. I just wanted to first address 3B, which is the school calendar. And I want to address it in regards to how parents are having a difficulty or having issues accessing uniforms at this time. A lot of parents are not able to go out and purchase those uniforms. And so I just want to read something that I received from a parent. And this is based on the current school calendar. This is what she sent to me. And she is a mom of two special needs children and a third, and she's unable to get on today because she doesn't have any assistance to help with her children. So she wants to address the fact that not all parents can go out and buy school uniforms without their child. Each child is different and some need to actually try them on. Right now, there are more and more asymptomatic positive kids, with hers being one of them, who can't leave their house. It stays in their system up to four to six weeks. So her question is, what do those kids do who have no control over that? What about the special needs kids who have to try them on because they need bigger sizes, different closures, and just different types of materials? She says they are stuck at home and can't do anything until a negative test come back. She's worried that with the start of school and her being unable to make the decision about whether her child will be able to wear uniforms or not and how that would affect her decision in educating her children either online or face-to-face instruction. She understands that this is not only a difficult time in finding a uniform for herself, but there are many other parents in town who are having the same issue. As of right now, we only have, that I know of, two stores who are currently selling uniforms that are affordable in that city trend who just opened back up, I believe, last week, and Walmart. If we expect for parents to access or have access to adequate uniforms by the first day of instruction, then that's going to be very difficult for them. Also, people say, we'll order them online. Well, really, the only online reliable source for buying affordable uniforms is The Children's Place. Parents have missed a deadline for, or the sale for Old Navy uniform tops, which was about, I think, two weeks ago. They were $4, so now parents don't have access to that sale because they were waiting to see what's going to happen. Other parents are worried about, okay, if I purchase uniforms now and then school shuts down, I just wasted a bunch of money. So what do I do? I also wanted to address item 3A, which is the purchase of the equipment. And I just want to say that I want you to think about making sure this equipment meets a teacher's expectation. I had an issue in the spring where my son was expected to do, show his strategies on the screen, which was impossible with the type of device that we had access to. So I just ask you to think, put that into your thoughts and then also make sure that the children receiving special education services are able to receive their assistance through those devices also. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Seal. All right, that closes the public comment for the day. And we'll move on to item three, Discussion and Action Agenda. Item A, Consideration of Purchase of Laptop Computers and Accessories. Mr. Martin?
Good afternoon, President Fitch, members of the board, Superintendent Torrio. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to meet and discuss the proposal that we have before the board this afternoon, which is to purchase 624 laptop computers for our teachers across the district. In your board book, we've included a distribution sheet of how those laptops would be distributed across the district to each position within our organization. The total cost of those laptops are $717,013.44. We're asking for these laptops now because you all graciously approved our Seesaw Learning Management System last week and our Canvas Learning Management System, which our teachers are going to need the training on. And what better time to get them trained as with a new device? Part of this is part of our plan that we started last year. If you recall, we were going to replace all of the desktop, teacher desktop computers across the district. We did replace one half of those desktop computers. And with COVID-19 hit, we had to step back and rethink. When the closures of the schools came about, we needed those devices with our teachers wherever they were at the time. So what we're proposing is to purchase mobile devices for our teachers. And later on, I'll talk a little bit about our plan for proposing to the board a plan to purchase mobile devices for our students as well. Any questions so far on that?
Mr. Martin?
Yes, sir.
This is Coach Farshid Nigromand. How are we keeping inventory of those computer that is issued?
Yes, sir, we will be keeping inventory of those computers. And let me just talk about what all this includes. This includes the 624 laptops themselves, which include a 10-key pad, which I think our teachers will be very satisfied with, especially when they are entering grades into the grade book. It includes a docking station. We realized that a mobile device, taking that device from home to work every day, plugging those cables back into our teachers' LCD boards and other peripherals that they have in the classroom, what we have done is included a docking station. So when they walk in, they only have to plug one wire into that laptop and all of their peripherals work off of that docking station. So it makes it very convenient. As well, it will include a briefcase for carrying the laptop and transporting it and also a three-year warranty. And a, let's see, imaging is included with that. So our plan is to, with your approval, order these devices and hopefully have them in teachers' hands within four to five weeks, ready to go. They will integrate with the learning management systems and we can begin our staff developments. And if we have a closure during the school year due to COVID-19, as we did this past spring, our teachers can pick that device up, take it with them. And if they can get internet access, they're able to continue their instruction online. So we believe that it is the right time. It is a good purchase and a good tool for our teachers to be able to use. Those desktop computers this past, that we purchased last year, we were not able to use in spring because they were here at the schoolhouse. So again, this, we believe, is a perfect time to take a look at purchasing mobile devices for both our teachers and students. The funding source that we are proposing to use is from our technology fund. Ms. Barbrick spoke to you all in our budget works ops about this technology fund that we have, that we receive our E-Rate reimbursements. And this, these funds set in an account for these types of purposes, for purchasing upgrades for our technology infrastructure or devices. So we think that this is a perfect, again, scenario to be able to bring forward to the board for your approval.
Mr. Martin?
Yes, sir.
Again, this is Farshid Nigromand.
Yes, sir.
As a former athletic director, I had a few coaches that their booster club purchased some computer for maintaining the statistics, roster, schedules, and so on. However, when those coaches were departing, there were times that I had to chase those computers, find some of them in Arkansas, some in Louisiana, somewhere, somewhere else. Is there any possibility that we are able to track those computer in case they're missing?
Coach, that's a great question. I'm glad you asked it. Yes, there is, and we are looking at what's called a Mobile Device Management System, which will track both those devices, devices that we propose for, that we will be proposing for our students as well as devices that are for iPads and those other type of devices. So yes, to answer your question, yes, sir. We will have a software. It will come, actually preload it with that software if we can get the purchasing in time. And we will be able to track and who it was issued to. And every time that device hits the internet, if we need to find out where it is, we can find it.
Okay, next question I have is, this computer issued to the teacher and staff, any information on those is subject to Public Information Act, correct?
Yes, sir.
Are they going to be aware of that as well?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. They are subject to the Public Information Act, just by law.
Okay, now, next question. You said they're warranted for three years, correct?
Correct.
Okay, if a damage done, damage, physical damage is done, is it still under warranty?
It does not cover physical damage. It does cover mostly mechanical damage. If it is, of course, abused or misused, it does not cover that. We've built into this number of 624 a 6% contingency, Coach. What we would do is, if the teacher reported that that computer was broken in order for the district not to, you know, interrupt instruction, we've got this, I don't like calling it a surplus, but we will have some computers on hand where we can do a hot swap with that teacher until we can get that device repaired so that there's no loss of instruction.
Okay, my final question is, the teachers do not teach summer schools. Are they check those computers in? And if they do in, are they going to be stored in a ventilated environment so the following year it'll still be functioning and working?
Yes, sir. We would expect that they would turn those computers in at the end of each school year, just like they would their keys and the regular check-in procedures. So yes, sir, they would be stored in a conditioned space so as not to have them go bad on us.
Thank you very much.
Let me add something here, Coach, with regards to your questions. One of the items that we would look at as well is an exit plan. Any staff member that is going to leave the district, one of the items that would be required is that all of their technology is submitted in. That's before they get their last paycheck. I'm going to tell you, I had to do that in the previous district that I was in. Before I can actually leave the district, I had to add an exit plan, and that included the technology as well. There's nothing more precious than that last paycheck as you're transitioning and leaving the district or leaving the profession. So there is an exit plan that we would have to initiate to make sure that that's part of the process as our students are leaving. Now, as to damages, if I were to damage a system to the, then that is my responsibility as the educator. That will not be absorbed by the school district. And of course, that would be collected. It would be probably submitted, depending on the device, and it would be reviewed to see if it was carelessness or if it was something that happened with the system. I agree with Mr. Martin. We would be looking at collecting devices, but we also want to be mindful of the capacity of our district. How many technicians do we have in the capacity of collecting all these devices? A lot of the biggest part of the planning our teachers do is during the summertime as they prepare for the next school year. So we would explore that a little bit further as to whether it would be beneficial financially and also for the organization to collect all of these devices and then store them. Because then we have to maintain the temperature and everything that's there and ensure that that same device that was collected from a teacher is delivered back to the same teacher. And those are hundreds of devices that we need to look at. So we would actually explore that a little bit further about collecting devices from the teachers. I know one thing for sure. Teachers love to have that device to be able to do the things that they need to do to prepare for school. And so we would explore that a little bit further to see what that would look like. So I just wanted to add a little bit to the wonderful information that Mr. Martin shared with you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Martin, I have a question. And I don't know if it's relevant or not, but you're saying those laptops will be assigned to different teachers. What if that teacher that's assigned a laptop does not have access to internet at home? Because we have a lot of people that might live outside of town and they don't have a strong internet signal or whatever. How are you going to deal with that?
That's a great question, Mr. Montoya. Part of our learning management systems, and this was a purposefully researched along with the students, once they hit internet access, they will be able to upload and download their lessons. So it will be the same for the teacher. They can create them once, you know, and once they hit an area or one of our medallions, one of our partnerships with our local businesses, or even come back to one of our campuses, this information will be uploaded into the learning management system. In this case, for third through 12th grade, it will be Canvas. And for pre-K through 2, it will be Seesaw. And those systems will then upload and download the information for the teacher as well as for the students.
Thank you.
All right, so I'm going to ask a question real quick. And that is, if, so if I'm understanding you on timeline, it seems probable that we could have these in the teacher's hands by August 31st?
According, yes, ma'am, according to the vendors, this is what they're telling us. They are telling us that these would ship from Dale within a week after being ordered. And they would be shipped to Dallas to a company that would actually put the NACADOTUS ISD image on it. Our team would be sent a laptop, one of these laptops. They would load our purchase software on those. And then we would send that laptop back to Dallas and they would image those laptops in Dallas and then deliver them here to NAC ISD. But your timeframe is correct, yes, ma'am. If all goes well and they're true to their word.
President Fitch, just so you would know, just, and this is a little bit of a side note. If I were to invite any one of you to come to my house, you would not have a sofa to sit on. I ordered a sofa two months ago and they said it would arrive in one to two weeks. And here it is, two months later, and I'm still waiting. So we are going to be at the mercy sometimes of some external situations. So in the house, I have chairs. So you will sit, just like the teachers. We would hope is that they would continue to provide some. Some of them are using their own devices. We want to make sure that we provide teachers an opportunity so they're not just, they're not having to use their own devices. They're using a district device. But in the meantime, there are some things that we might have to adjust and adapt. We're hoping and very fairly certain that it will be here based on what they're telling us. But we also want to make sure to remain open that if something may create a hiccup based on its arrival.
All right. I'm going to press the pause button for just a second, guys, and change the subject. I've got something going in the background here. And I want to make you aware of it because I'm not sure what the implication is going to be. That is, we have reached our maximum number of participants viewing this meeting currently live in Zoom. So in conversations, it appears that we are going to try to use a feature of Zoom here to live feed this feed that you're seeing over onto Facebook. We've not used that feature before, so we're not 100% sure what's going to happen when we do that. But it could lead to a meeting interruption when that switches clicks. So if that happens and if you are removed from this meeting, please just log back on and we'll get this going again. So.
Yeah, Ms. Fitch, it'll, we'll have to stop the meeting to do this.
I think that that would be appropriate to do. And I apologize that we're doing this kind of mid-discussion. But I think it's more important that we be transparent and make this accessible to as many people as possible. So.
Okay, you might give me five or 10 minutes here to make this happen.
All right. And then just rejoin the way we joined?
Yes.
Okay, good.
There may be a few more coming in. We're getting close. We're back up to 90 that have logged in. 91, it's going up there. All right. So thank you, guys, for your patience. That's one of the unexpected items that I referred to at the beginning of the meeting and appreciate your patience. What we're doing now is, because we did hit the maximum number of participants that could log on to Zoom for this meeting, that enabled us to livestream it on Facebook to ensure that everybody that wanted to tune in and see and hear the discussion could be a part of that. So I appreciate your patience very much in enabling us to do that. And I apologize that it came at the inopportune moment, right in the middle of discussing action item 3A, which is the consideration of purchase of laptop computers and accessories. Mr. Martin, to try to get us back into the flow of the meeting, I did have one more question I'll ask and then we'll see if, what other questions the board members had. If I recall correctly, last year, we had planned to basically replace teacher computers on a two-year schedule. We were doing half of them one year and half the next year. So that would indicate to me that we had a budget allocated for this year to buy some new computers. Are this, what is the budget impact taking that into consideration of this proposed action?
Ms. Fitch, you are correct. We did have a budget item for the completion of that project which started last year. One of the things, one of the plans. One of the things, one of the plans that we have for those computers that we did buy last year, the desktop computers, is to repurpose those and have our, one thing is not included in here, our group of employees that are not included in here are our office staffs in this proposal. So we're proposing to, if a campus needs a desktop computer or department, they can now purchase one of those computers from the supply that we acquired last year. I'll ask Ms. Barbara to elaborate on the budget piece that we had budgeted for this year, if she would, please.
Yes, so, yes, we have a line item budget for computers as well as a planned pool from fund balance. So rather than split, splitting the funds for our teacher computers, we're going to use the technology fund for the teachers and then use the planned budget for the, for the teaching computers to buy student devices.
Okay, wait, you lost me there. Say that one more time.
All right. The, what we have planned on using in general fund for teacher computers will be reallocated for student devices.
Okay. And the funds using, and this is coming from the technology fund, which is, is that part of our regular budget or is that?
No, it is, no, it's not. If you, I don't know if you'll remember or not, but at our, when we adopted the budget, I brought, I mentioned a line item for a fund transfer to another fund from basically the savings of our telephone account. And we've been storing those funds up over the years. Those, that savings is generated from E-rate, which is what Mr. Martin mentioned. That is what we will use for the teacher devices. And then we will use the general fund portion for the student devices.
Okay, I'm following you. And the, there's sufficient funds in the technology fund to support this purchase?
Yes, there is.
Ms. Finch, if I may also add, we have, we facilitated a district advisory committee meeting yesterday, of which we had a pretty good participation. We presented these proposals to our district advisory committee, which consists of parents, community members, teachers, and other administrators across the district. We received positive feedback with regards to these plans. So we felt pretty good leaving that meeting.
Dr. Grumman, Mr. Martin, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we've had some problems with cybersecurity. Now, we're going to take and plug from our filtered network into any network, any wifi anywhere. What is our security plan for these, all these devices going out? Because then that same device will come back and be plugged back into our system. So we don't want to re-infect or re-have the same problem again. So what is our plan to deal with this increased need for security on these, this new plan?
That's a great question, Dr. Grumman, and I appreciate you asking it. Of course, we're going to add antivirus to these computers as well as part of our management system, our mobile device management system. It is designed to filter and content, filter content as well as help protect those computers from bringing any outside unwanted material back into the general network itself. Also, you all graciously approved Carbon Black several months ago. Carbon Black, as part of its protocol, will isolate a device if it does come back in infected. So it does not, the infection does not spread any further than that one device.
That's what I, that's why I wanted to be sure that we are not overlooking something. That sounds wonderful, that Carbon Black is as best as we, that's the best thing we can buy and we bought it. So now it's just applying it. And do we have enough people to instruct teachers properly on how to do this? You know, do we have somebody already in the, the technology department that they're going to dedicate themselves to giving additional security to this area? Or it's just going to be what we've routinely been doing?
Well, we're going to, our plan is to step up our game. Ms. Kirsten Morris is on, on the meeting here. Ms. Morris, Ms. Finch, with your permission, I'd like to get Ms. Morris to see if she wanted to comment on that.
Absolutely. Yes, I'm really excited about the MDM we're looking at. And it will really lock down a lot of the websites that both the students and teachers will be able to access at their home. And then for training purposes, we'll also be able to make sure that our teachers know how to use the devices and the programs that we're pushing out. And I'm really excited with the laptop feature because we're in a strong, really big need for a webcam and microphone for our teachers to do audio recordings for our students. I think we're at an age where our students are learning better through video instead of submitting papers for students to do online. So that's going to be a huge feature for our teachers that they have been needing.
Ms. Finch, if I may, one of the things that's exciting is a conversation that I've had with each one of the board members. If you're noticing, we're having a conversation and the questions are coming up, where the IT folks are there, but also instruction is there. And Mr. Grumman, when you said, are we doing what we've always done? I'm here to tell you, we're not doing what we've always done. Some of these things that we're having to do are things that we must do as an organization. We must get rid of the silos. We can't have one silo recommending one thing and then expecting our teachers to make it work in the classroom. We want to make sure that when we're talking technology, that it comes from the hands of the classroom teachers that are applying it. We can't, we can't purchase it on the technology side and then force it into the classroom. So the exciting things that we're having is being able to have a conversation where technology on one side and instruction on the other come together to provide something that is cohesive and can meet the needs of our kids in the classroom. So that's what's exciting about what we're doing. Even though we do have some infrastructure items that we are going to be addressing, we want to make sure that we never lose sight of what's happening in the classroom with our teachers to give it breadth to our students.
Thank you very much. That's very exciting to know that. We're in a new adventure.
Absolutely.
Reverend, you had a question?
No, ma'am. Just wanted to make a move that the board approved the purchase of laptop computers in the amount of $717,013.44.
Thank you, Reverend. Do we have a second before we continue discussion?
This is Mindy, I will second.
Thank you, Mrs. Winslow. Before we move that to the vote, let me, let me do, ask Mr. Martin, you've done a wonderful plan as far as telling us and sharing with us what the plan is to get portable devices to our teachers. Can you tell us a little bit about what you're looking at for our students? I know the proposal for the 17, $717,000 takes care of our teachers, but what about our kids?
Thank you, Ms. Finch, for asking that question. That leads me into our, first of all, let me just say that I work with a wonderful group of folks who make this all possible. I just get the wonderful, I just get the great opportunity to present this stuff to you all. Ms. Morris, Dr. Hill, the instructional staff, Mike Owens, the technology staff. They've done a wonderful job in helping put all this stuff together. Moving forward with our student plans, we, late last, well, not late, but about 7:53 PM, I received an email last evening. And in your board book, we have, Ms. Holly Anderson was gracious enough to add it to your board book. So if you will take a look at that document at the end of the, in your board book, I believe it's called Operation Connectivity. And I'm just going to draw your attention to just a couple of pages.
I'm not finding it.
It's actually the TEA bulk order process.
Oh, I got that.
TEA bulk, okay, TEA bulk order process.
Oh, okay.
All right. And if you will turn to page five on there. We've been awaiting word from the Commissioner of Education, Mike Morath, on this Operation Connectivity program where the state of Texas is going to try to make a bulk purchase on mobile devices, including iPads, Chromebooks, and hotspots.
Mr. Martin, can I, excuse, could I interrupt you for a moment? Board, when you're looking at the document, the, and you push the bottom to move from page to page, we are running one page short because the, it counts the header as one page. So when you're in the document with it, just add one more page to it and you'll get to where he's at if you're still trying to locate the document.
Okay.
Which would be page six if you're scrolling through it.
Okay.
All right, good. Thank you.
Sorry for that, Mr. Martin.
No problem. Thank you, Dr. Rio. So we've been waiting on the commissioner and TEA to come out with the plan of bulk purchasing statewide. And yesterday evening, 7:53 PM, we received an email. And we had to, we, early this morning, we got it in your board book as quickly as possible for you to review. So what the state is offering for students and is really dealing with students of economically disadvantaged situations is that they will pay 50% of the expenditures incurred for the devices and hotspots. We are, we've already been planning and have our numbers together, majority of our numbers together, ready to present a proposal to the board to approve items or devices for our students. So if you look midway that page, it talks about the 50% matching expenditures. It also talks about, you know, if we want to go above and get all kids a Chromebook brand new, that it would cover the socio-economically disadvantaged students. And then we would just pay the regular full price for the students who are not considered economically disadvantaged. We would, we are working on those numbers. Like I said, we just got this when we got here this morning. And so we are working on numbers of what that would look like to be able to propose to the board at a future meeting. It is a rather quick turnaround time that TEA is looking at. If you will follow me to the next page, page six or seven.
Mr. Martin, before you leave that page, if you might.
Yes, sir.
Board, I want you to look, there you see District A, District B, District C. Do you see that?
Yes.
Okay, District A, once again, what Mr. Martin is talking about is our recommendation and looking at, to you, the board, would be District B. That model there. District A does not include all of our students. And we in Nakadochis believe every student is important, not just our economically disadvantaged kids. We will provide them the support, but we do have students that are of need that are not categorized as economically disadvantaged. When you look at District C, that is for those districts that have devices. And they don't need to purchase a lot of devices. So District C only purchases a minimal amount of devices. Our proposal is District B. That means we take care and the state would allow us and match the funds for our economically disadvantaged. And we as a board and as a district would say we value all kids and we would purchase the remaining students. Mr. Martin, we are sitting at close to what, 80% economically disadvantaged?
No, that's correct, yes, sir. 81%.
Yeah, you go, 81% of our kids would get devices at 50% the market value. The state would pay for the other half. What we would do is, as a district, we would incur the 20, remaining 20% to make sure and ensure that all of our students get a device. So before we left this page, I wanted to make sure you and our public knew that those are the three plans. And we in Nakadochis value every student in making sure that we put a device in every one of our kiddos. So once again, my apologies, Mr. Martin, for interruption. I just want to make sure to clarify those three different plans that the state has provided us late last night.
Thank you, Dr. Rio. On page seven, it is our bulk, bulk order process timelines. So as you can see, as I mentioned before, there are a few steps that we have to follow. And then, and we have a very short timeline to do so. And it appears that the end date is a little bit prior to your next board meeting, board. So we're planning on getting the applications and the paperwork in order and hopefully asking you all to call another special meeting, potentially to get our student devices on the way.
That was going to be my next question. I, Pam, I think, you know, as soon as we can, we need to do this to ensure that we can get this process and get it done for our kids.
I agree.
One thing also, Mr. Montoya, that we're doing is, we, our infrastructure has not been designed for one-to-one devices. And I'm talking about when you walk into a classroom, you look up to the ceiling, you're going to see a little blue light. And that is our internet connection. Now, if we have teachers with devices and we have students with devices, the state is allowing that to be part of the expenditure when it comes to, for socioeconomic kids is those hotspots. So Mr. Martin and his team will be evaluating the infrastructure as well to make sure that when we go to a one-to-one device, we don't, in other words, we can have a brand-new sports car, but then we don't have the fuel to run it. We want to make sure that we got the fuel to run it and not just be looking really pretty with a nice car. The same thing with this computer, want to make sure that it's functional and it's able to meet the needs in the classroom and be able to address the wifi connections that we may have. So wanted to add that as well, the devices include that as well.
Thank you.
Our preliminary plan is to provide, for our pre-K through two students, iPads, and for our three through 12 students, Chromebooks.
And what is the timeline for getting the devices? If everything goes according to the TA timeline that we're seeing here, what would your estimate be on being able to get these devices in the hands of our students?
10 to 16 weeks, which puts us somewhere around November. But in checking with our vendors, if we were trying to do this on our own, it would be the same timeline.
Or probably longer.
I'm skipping, Dr. Grumman. We, it said for the iPads, it was only four weeks, what I read.
You're correct. Yes, sir. iPads, four weeks, Chromebooks, 10 to 16 weeks. Yes, sir, you're correct.
So there would be a possibility that a part, a part of our students would have iPads sooner than the other students would have Chromebooks.
And that's our younger grades, right?
Yes, ma'am, that's our younger grades.
Well, I'm excited about the state stepping up and being willing to share costs with us on this. I mean, getting 50% of the cost of, what's, you know, 80% of our student devices paid for is, I think, an opportunity too good to pass up.
I agree.
President Finch, I may add something. Mr. President Finch, the, for full transparency for our board to know, we do have iPads that are in the district. But some of these iPads that we do have, maybe five years or older, depending on what we have. We want to take advantage of the technology. This would be a seventh-generation iPad. And we would, our recommendation is that when we move forward with this with the state is that we replace all of our iPads from pre-K all the way up through second grade. That way, we can have a straight line of, for renewing those down the road and not have to worry about devices that are basically at end-of-life and are not capable of doing some of the things that our teachers, exciting things our teachers can use. Now, those iPads that we do have will continue to be utilized in other fashions. We can use them instructionally, we can use them to support assessments. And that, those items can be used pre-K through 12th grade. And those are those other iPads that we have that are in the, in district. So we just want to be full transparent with regards to some questions we may have about what are we doing with our old iPads? Well, we will be utilizing those for tail pass and some of the other things that we can use for our students.
Will there be that capability to upgrade some of those iPads with some different programs in them? Will there be that capability to upgrade some of those iPads or some different programs in them?
Are you talking about the older iPads or the newer iPads? That would be a question when we bring them in. Mr. Martin would have to, with his team, we would have to look at the systems. And when we re-image them, we might find out some of these machines, the teachers have been doing duct tape and baling wire to keep them running. That's the reality of it.
Right.
So if we've got systems that are doing duct tape and baling wire, they're being nothing but frustrating our teachers. We need to put them out of commission and take them out of rotation so that our kids are not faltering and using deficient systems, especially our young learners, our littles. Our littles have to have something that can work with their fine motor skill. And we've got a great program. Dr. Hill and her team has done a great job of finding something that will meet their needs. So we will evaluate those systems, Mr. Montoya, figure out which ones are at end-of-life and follow the protocols to transition those out of circulation.
Thank you.
Great plan, Dr. Trejo.
Yeah. Hopefully some of the devices we can use in the interim. Yes, I believe that was Reverend?
Yes. I was just gonna ask, since there's a timeline and being that it's already in the action agenda, do we want to take action on it today? Since we, there is a timeline that we're working with and it is mentioned listed on the action part of our agenda.
It's not, it's not quite, I think, correct. I think there's two facets there. We're not talking about laptop computers per se, which is the item listed on the agenda today. And the second part of that, and one of the questions I was about to ask Ms. Barbrick, is I know we don't have a dollar amount put together yet. I know, I can't imagine if we just got this information last night. So Mrs. Barbrick, can you give us an idea yet on what we're looking at budget impact-wise?
Well, if we were to buy, based on estimates, to buy a new device for every, and again, like I said, you said, we don't have all the information. We do know, according to this, it looks like a Chromebook costs $237. So that's what I base this on. If we bought a new Chromebook for every student and then we got 50% back for our at-risk, the cost would be close to $900,000 for those devices. I don't expect it to be that much because we're not buying new Chromebooks for every student. iPads, I think, would be less expensive. And then we're also looking at hotspots, which I have no idea how much that would be. But again, $900,000, some, we do not have that much in general fund. We would have to pull from fund balance for that.
I think that would be a very wise use of our fund balance, personally speaking.
Agreed.
Agreed.
So I guess my question would be, how soon can we have those estimates so that we can act on this as a board?
Well, one thing we can do is we're gonna proceed with communicating with TEA with the will of the board that if you want us to participate in this initiative that the state is having, then we can communicate. Mr. Martin has a timeline and let them know that Nacogdoches is wanting to take advantage of this purchase of the 50% for economic disadvantaged kids. Ms. Barbrick and her staff can start looking at numbers to see what that 20% would cost of those students, understanding that 20% would be inclusive of iPads and Chromebooks of students that are there because we would pay for 100% of those students that are non-economic disadvantaged. And then we could put the numbers together to figure out what would be the rate with regards for the 50% of the economic disadvantaged purchases that we have. In the meantime, Mr. Martin and his team will also be evaluating the connectivity of our campuses to make sure, do we have to have any hotspots and where do we need to reevaluate that? There is a possibility that the expenditures that we've done in the past with the current hotspots that we have may be out of date to meet the criteria that we have. This being said, because every mobile device, a student with an iPhone or a cellphone, and then also the iPads and the devices, they're gonna all connect on that one, that one mobile spot. And that one mobile spot in the classroom may only be able to substantially hold 25 systems. So we may need to look at that and evaluate, what does those hotspots look like? So there's a couple of things we can do in the meantime and come to you at the next board meeting. Because, Mr. Martin, if I'm not mistaken, it's Region Four that will be working through this process for the state, correct?
Yes, sir, Dr. Trejo, you're correct.
And so what they'll do is they will order the devices that we need. And then I'm anticipating them coming back and saying, okay, Nacogdoches, we got devices. Where do you want them delivered and how are you paying for this? And we want to make sure that the board is notified, what is that bottom dollar in the amount? We gave you worst-case scenario that it would be. And that number that Ms. Barbrick gave you is if we paid 100% of what we look at with Chromebooks from the bottom grid all the way to the top. And that's not what's gonna happen. It'll just be grades three through 12.
All right. Well, and it looks like we've got a deadline on us. You guys are gonna be working overtime because it looks like we've got to get back to Region Four before next week, correct?
Yes, yes.
That's correct.
So board members, can we make ourselves available for a special meeting between now and next week to take care of the student laptop technology?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Thank y'all for that. Any more questions or discussion on this item before we take a vote?
Yes, Dr. Grumman.
Yes, sir.
Okay, two things. Reverend, thanks for trying to facilitate things and moving things along. Thank you. Your experience leads me and helps me. The other thing I wanted to mention is in the leadership tasbe, when COVID first happened, the school districts that already had one-to-one, they already had their technology set up, were much better suited to meet the learning needs of their students. So we are, we are a little behind, but the good news is financially, we will win and the students will win because everyone will get a new functional computer and a functional hotspot. And we don't have to rewire anything. It's like, one time, we fixed this problem and then we just face the renewal, what we need to do to keep this up in the future so that we stay a one-to-one district for technology to student. And this is good. This is really good.
You know, by the grace of God, last year, we talked about what do we need? I remember a couple of board members saying, what do we need to do about technology? And we were very patient. We were still, we were working through the process. I know it was frustrating, but I promise you, and I have partners that are doing this right now. They're trying to figure out how are they gonna recoup their money because they paid 100% of the profits. Here we are because we were very patient and very methodical in looking at what we had. And we could not have expected something like this from the state. But if you're thinking about the hundreds and thousands of dollars that this is allowing us to save. And so I commend each one of our board members for being patient and for us being very methodical in what we're wanting to do. And I'd just say, by the grace of God, this has fallen on our laps, we were able to take advantage of it. And the winners of this are our kids in Nacogdoches ISD. The kids who Nacogdoches ISD win, and it's every single one of them.
Any further questions or comments before we take a vote? All right. We have a motion on the floor to, scroll back up, to approve $717,013.44 to purchase laptop computers from CDWSG for our teachers. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much. That will take us to Action Item 3B, Consideration of Revision to Instructional Calendar for the 2020-2021 school year. Mr. Martin?
Thank you, President.
Mr. Martin, do you allow me, before you launch in? I wanted to preface this, looking at our calendar and to our board, we never addressed our calendar, even though districts around us were looking at calendars. We were very, very patient in looking at our calendar. Matter of fact, the calendar that we had initially launched was a late start. Matter of fact, it was a calendar that you, the board, had adopted last year for this new and upcoming school year. Even with the pressure of the state and the Commissioner of Education saying that we do need to address the calendar, we can start earlier, we held firm and embraced the calendar that you adopted and at that point. One thing, the thing that drove that decision was that my team and I and this board, we continually talked about that the calendar is only one facet. It's the social distancing issue that is the problem. That's the issue that we can move the calendar any which way. It's the fact of how do we control the number of students in a face-to-face environment? And so when you look at the plan today that we're unfolding, this is a plan that has been in the making through some gracious participation of surveys and input from our teachers and administrators and sleepless nights of just having dialogue, not only within the district, but also with leaders across the state. The commission that I've had with our partner schools in Region Seven with other superintendents or even in the state of Texas is something that I wanted to preface and let folks know that the plan that you're about to see and hear is a plan that meets the needs of not only our staff that have made their point clear to us, but also our community and our parents that have made their point clear to us as well, as well as the safety and security that we request to keep everybody safe, our teachers, our students, administrator, and our great town of Nacogdoches. So, Mr. Martin, I'll let you go ahead and just launch it from there, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Trejo, President Finch, members of the board. Administration is recommending that the board approve to adjust our instructional calendar for our students' start date from August the 24th to August the 31st. This would allow some additional time for our teachers to look at the procedures and processes to finalize our Fall 2020 Back-to-School Frameworks. Additionally, some other benefits for the students' start delay would be to allow some time during, for us to do professional development with our teachers to include our online management, learning management systems. Also allow for some additional professional development. Teachers can make recommendations on these frameworks. Some of this has already started. Our principals started, I believe, last week. And this week, they started calling teachers involuntarily to have them look at these frameworks that have been put together to critique them, as well as to pose additional questions with regards to health and safety. We are concentrating and focused on the latest health and safety guidelines being used in the district for this restart of our school year. Also, one of the other benefits was to wait, to allow TEA some time to talk and get us out these guidelines for the TEA subsidized mobile devices. So we've got that information now. The biggest, again, is going to allow us to be able to work with our teachers, let them take a look at these frameworks, have them give us some feedback. They are the closest folks who are to our students. These procedures were put together by numerous folks who have been working on them all summer long, ever since March, actually. And now our teachers get to take a look at them and help us to perfect them. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Can I elaborate a little bit, President Finch?
Please.
Okay, just for clarification, so we'll see, we are moving the start of school one week further. We already, matter of fact, if you look, some of our neighbors, our neighbors have moved their start to the date that we're leaving, which is the 23rd, 24th. And we're moving one week further. So the first day of school for Nacogdoches ISD would be August the 31st. Let me clarify what first day of school means. First day of school means that our primary purpose will be virtual instruction. We will open up on the 31st with very targeted groups of students, specific groups. It wouldn't be a brick-and-mortar, face-to-face instruction is going to be very limited, extremely limited that first week, the August the 31st for that week. The TEA and our commissioner has allowed us the grace to say, you got four weeks from the initial start date, which is August 31st, to transition slowly to face-to-face instruction. This is something that we want to make sure that our teachers are able to put the protocols in place, are able to work through their day, take a very small group, extremely small group of students to the cafeteria, to gym, and move with them throughout the campus. Now, once again, these are only families that have selected face-to-face instruction. And that's something that's been very clear from the state. Any family that selects face-to-face instruction needs to be provided an opportunity to come to school. And that is our goal. However, we will be looking at doing that very strategically and very controlled with a percentage. And that percentage will continue to increase for every subsequent week, all the way up to September the 28th. On September the 28th, if all goes as planned, that would be the last of the four weeks. And at that point, if things have been going really well, we may be at 100% brick-and-mortar for the families that want it. Because some families will want to remain in a virtual setting. So virtual setting will continue. But it's also very important for you, the board, to know that the Commissioner of Education has made it very clear that on September the 28th, this board will evaluate. And there's a resolution that you will be seeing here in the near future. But on September 28th, you will evaluate if we will extend this to an additional four weeks. But that decision is only going to be made by the board. And so that's not something that I, as the superintendent, or this district, will make that decision. I am making the decision that we will transition from August the 31st with a four-week transition period of having controlled students coming into face-to-face. Those are students that want face-to-face only. That allows transportation, nutrition services, and our teachers to start looking at, what does it look like with small numbers of students as we move through the process? Do we anticipate anything happening during those four weeks? I don't know. We may anticipate that there may be a closure due to COVID-19. But then that allows us, as a district, to see what does that look like on a small scale? How do we close and how do we transition and how do we get back to school? So that's the timeline that we look at. But I wanted to make sure that you knew that those four weeks that are there allow us to really listen and put our teachers that are looking through this process, have them run through the protocols and be able to see that happen. Here's why we added the one week. The one-week change allows teachers to run the protocols without students. No students are there. They're able to say, okay, today I'm supposed to be doing this, and they can run their schedule. If we would have started school like we initially planned, then teachers would have been doing it the very, side-by-side with kids for those that selected it. And we did not want that. We wanted teachers to have at least a week there to run it without students, run the protocols, and then go back and talk to their principal or to myself and say, what were you thinking? This is what's going on. And it allows us to really evaluate what do we need to do and adjust. Because ultimately, it is the teacher in the classroom that, when it gets to brick-and-mortar as to moving kids from point A to point B and point C, to be able to look at that. There's a lot of variables, a lot of questions still, you know, that we're gonna be able to answer during this four-week transition. What does bus stop look like? What does pickup look like? What is that drop-off in the morning? What does breakfast look like? What does the water fountain look like at school? What does the playground look like? What does B E look like? I can list and list and list and list a, a number of things. And this will allow us to transition some of those and have very meaningful conversations with our school principals about what they're hearing from their teachers as they're running their protocols and their procedures. I will tell you this, the task force that was put together was based on the surveys that we sent early in the summer. The surveys to our teachers and we appreciated the teachers for giving us their feedback and to the surveys to our family members, our parents. And immediately upon request, arrival of those surveys, Dr. Hill, and I applaud her and her team, put together the task force and said, these are the concerns that our folks are having, everyone is having. And then we divided that into task force. And those task force were able to go in and say, for instance, one task force may have been cafeteria. And they've been, been able to dive in there, look at the guidance from the state, a guidance from Fed, federal, the feds as far as what the national expectations are and health officials, and then also just good old-fashioned common sense. You know, you don't have to have initials in the back of your name. Sometimes you gotta use the common sense of, as far as what we're doing to meet the needs of our kids. So, when you look at the whole, the whole scope of things, there's a, there's a rationale as to why we moved it one week. There's a rationale as to why the 31st virtual learning is going to be going on for the majority of our families. And then we're going to do that transition of, of very, very succinct inclusion of students all the way up through September the 28th. And prior to September the 28th, you, the board, and myself and the team will continue to have dialogue so you will be informed as to what is the next steps? Do we need to extend it an additional four weeks? But once again, that decision will not be made lightly. That will be made by this board to see if we can move, if we, if we need to move that even further into, into the school year.
Dr. Trujillo, it seems to me that we also have to take into consideration the number of cases of, of the virus in our community and where we're going to be holding with that. Because I, I, I am concerned, personally, I'm concerned with that because I, I don't want teachers to be at risk and I don't want the students to be at risk. So, I think, I think we're all cognizant of that. But I think for me, it's even more so because I don't, I just don't want teachers and students to be in, in danger. That's, that's my.
Absolutely.
So, question here, Dr. Trujillo. So, we were taking these first four weeks that, that the T E A has said, we can use those first four weeks of school, that first month to, in other words, on day one, we don't have to be open to every parent that wants students face-to-face learning. But within four weeks, we have to make that available to every parent that chooses that method. Am I correct?
Yes, unless the board sees that we have.
How then, and I understand, and I like your approach of kind of this phase-in incremental approach to get us there. But how will you go about if you've got, let's hypothetically say, you've got a thousand parents that said, I want my child to have face-to-face instruction. How are you going to select in week one, who is, who's gonna have that option versus be online?
And Dr. Hill's on the line and I'm gonna, I'm gonna, we've been working with this. And Dr. Hill, are you there?
Sure, I am. Thank you very much. So, we are working with our principals to develop a plan on how to prioritize which students are selected to return each week.
Okay.
Now, that is also taking into consideration the regression that we have. You have academic kids that, and the teachers will be able to talk about, a first-grade teacher with a second-grade teacher to see, okay, I had Johnny last year. This is what we're looking at. So, we've got to address that regression and that's exactly what Dr. Hill is talking about in conversations with our principals.
But is it, is it, I'm sorry. The method's gonna be like 25% in week one, 50% in week two, 75% in week three, up to 100% by the, something like that?
It could be, yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay.
We, we were talking percentages yesterday with the principals and they had some other ideas that they were entertaining. And so I'm going to circle back with them next week.
Okay. I got you.
Dr. Trujillo?
Yes, sir.
This is Coach Farshid. Do you know any school district that starts much earlier than we do in the area?
That starts much earlier than we do?
Yes, sir.
Oh, yes, Henderson. Matter of fact, Henderson will receive students beginning next Wednesday. And, and, and the reason I know that is I've got, my wife is working over there and I know several staff members, they, they're spouses. And they're, they're crunching right now trying to get their teachers ready with their protocols and systems that are there. So Henderson is one, Lufkin is another one. Some of our area superintendents that are, that are in neighboring school districts that may have no outbreak of COVID or limited concerns about COVID are starting pretty, pretty shortly.
Yes, sir. As I understood, one of the schools on the northwest of us starts on August 19th. And they probably will have some experience that they can, we can benefit from that. Are you in touch with them or are you planning on visiting with them to see what the problems they would have or what's the easiest way?
Absolutely. Every decision that we've done in the conversations I've had with y'all, it's, we've connected with Region Seven. We also have roundtable conversations with the superintendents as far north as Pine Tree, that is in Region Seven, so that we can get an idea of what's happening. One thing that's gonna, this is going to allow us having such a, a later start for us is the fact that we are able to look at what is happening with neighboring schools, necessarily addressing specific things that they're looking for. One thing that's also important to note is that by doing this late start that we have, that we are, we are doing an additional item. And that additional item is that we are extending the academic day by 30 minutes, either by in the morning or the afternoon. That way, we don't have to add into the summer. Our end date for Nacogdoches, Mr. Martin, if you remind me, is May the 26th, right?
May the, May the 28th.
28th is the last day of instruction. Making this adjustment and moving it one week back does not require us to end later than that date. However, if we do have some God-forsaken thing that some happens and we, we have some closures, then we, we will have to look at adding days at the end. But because we are extending the day by 30 minutes, we are, Mr. Martin, remind me, we are banking about 11 days?
Yes, sir.
For elementary through middle school. That means if we close school for two days, the state's not going to require us to make up those days because we have, we now keep them up by minutes. And so now we have 11 days that we, we are anticipating that closures are going to happen. And when they do, we bank some days there that we're able to pull in and use those. I hope not to get beyond the days that we've banked so that we don't have to go beyond the last day of instruction that's there. But one thing, Mr. Farshid, to your question is, those campuses that are looking, that, that may have that and they start early, they've also adjusted other parts of their calendar. They may have a, a fall break, which they close down for a week. They may have a winter break and then they have also an additional break in the spring. And when you put those natural breaks in there along with natural holidays, then you have to make up those days and you go into June and into late June. And we chose to remain in its entirety, the calendar that this board adopted, which is Christmas break, spring break, all the different breaks that we do have that were traditionally there, we left those intact. And the only thing we did is requesting that we move the first week of school one week back, and it still wouldn't impact us because we were able to bank those days and provide teachers additional time as we prepare. And we can monitor conversations with surrounding school districts about what their outbreaks are, what's going on that's causing it. And there may be a situation where the governor steps in or even the Commissioner of Education steps in and says, hold on, we're gonna stop everything. And that way, we, we, and that may happen between now and the date that we actually start school based on the number of schools that will be beginning school before we are. And overwhelmingly, I will tell you, Mr. Farshid, is most of the school districts are starting either the week prior to us or two weeks prior to when we are.
Yes, sir. I was listening to one of the superintendents and it was indicating that by August 15th, which they're gonna start on the 19th, by August 15th, they have to declare they're gonna be remote learning or in-person. And there was a stipulation that if you are in remote learning, you are unable to participate in extra activities after school. So, I don't know if it's the right time to discuss these issues or something that we want to talk about in the future.
Yeah, I know. And the, remote learning is not going to dictate, not in Nacogdoches, is not going to dictate whether a student will participate in U I L or not. They will participate in U I L as long as they meet the guidelines with regard to U I L and everything else. So, I will, I will feel confident sharing that with you. I know there's other varying opinions about that, but I really feel strongly that a parent that chooses to have their child virtually because they feel that, because of the COVID-19 and they don't feel secure, I don't want a, a parent feeling that I've got to put them in school in order for them to be involved with band or be involved with football or basketball. This is a serious decision and I want to make sure that we're open to providing that for, for our parents. However, the kids need to meet all the U I L expectations, maintain grades, participate in the practices and do all the normal things that they have to do in order to continue with U I L.
Yes, I, I want to make sure that he did not say U I L. He simply said club and activities.
Yes, sir, sir.
I just don't want to make sure that.
Yes.
Correct.
I appreciate it.
I'd like to take a moment just to applaud your, your approach to this, Dr. Trujillo, of, of making it as flexible as possible and giving parents as many options as possible. Because I know that there are parents out there that don't feel comfortable sitting their kids back to the classroom. And so having online available to them while also offering the person-to-person for those parents that are eager and feel like their child learns best in a classroom setting. I appreciate the flexibility that you're offering to our communities and the options. You're giving everybody choices.
Yes.
The President.
Also, oh, go ahead.
No, I'm, I'm, excuse me, board member, go ahead.
I, I just wanted to add to that, Dr. Trujillo. I want to appreciate, I, I just want to say, I, I really appreciate how patient you've been. And you've said to us, the board, several times that you want to prove your intentions, not with words only, but with actions. And by holding back and these actions that you've shown show that you aren't rushing into anything. And I, I think that should be applauded. I mean, the fact that we've now changed our day, that's great, yeah. And does give the teachers more time to train and prepare for a new way of teaching. But that you've added to that an easing in to this whole new scenario that nobody has ever walked through before, that is to be applauded. I also want to just sort of bring up again, real quickly, Mr. Martin, when you were presenting the computer stuff to the district advisory committee, I assume you also presented to them the calendar?
Sure did, yes, ma'am, we sure did.
And there were teachers present?
There were teachers present, yes, ma'am.
And they were allowed to make comments or, you know, suggestions and that sort of thing?
Absolutely, they were, yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to kind of make that clear again because we, we've been hearing that teachers do not feel like they've had a voice. But they've had maybe not as much of a voice as they would like, but they have had some voice. And then what you are presenting here, Dr. Trujillo, is not only more of a voice, but more of an informed voice. In other words, right now with this calendar and this proposal, now they are talking to their principals and giving their concerns. And then as they ease into this, as, as problems approach, they are having an opportunity to address those then instead of some theory, which nobody knows how it's going to work. I just, I think you've done a great job. Thank you.
And I, I need to tell you, it's the team of folks that we spent hours, hours, late nights texting each other, did you think about this? And then taking it to the task force and, and our team talking with our principals, our campus principal, every single one of them has participated in this. And I'm going to tell you, there's nothing more amazing to know that you have campus leaders that are invested and, and also concerned with the same things Mr. Montoya is talking about. We are worried about our teachers. That's our greatest resource. When you look at our budget, we expend most of our money in, in our teachers. So, we have to protect our greatest resource. And that's what we're looking at is, and, and I'm going to tell you, can we solve it all? I wish I could. I wish I could pull something out of my pocket and say, here it is. It'll keep us all safe. But I, it's not, and, and, but we want to make sure that we do everything in our power to, to, to think about the what-ifs and then empower our teachers to let them know that we do value them. We do care about them. We know they're the greatest resource for our kids. But we also know that we have families that want to get back to some sort of semblance of normal, something that can give their kids hope. Our high school kids need to be thinking about the future. Our elementary kids need to be thinking about the excitement of going to school, making friends. But we have to do that all a different way, a new way and, and, and with respect with the social distancing and the P P Es that are there. It's all going to be new for all of us. And I'm going to be the first to tell you, I'm not the fir, I'm not the first to walk in this, on this earth that made a single mistake. I, I make them, just like every one of us. Only one person walked on this earth and didn't make a single mistake. The rest of us is, is how do we pick ourselves up and make those decisions so that we're in the best interest to keep each other safe? Because I share Mr. Montoya's concern and the concern of every board member is the safety and the security and the health being of our teachers, our, our families, everyone that we have. And it weighs heavy on all of our spirits. But I also know that some of our families, 50%, based on our survey, want our kids back in school. 50% of our kids, of our parents, want the kids back in school. So, they're going to have to be very patient with us and give us some grace because we're going to transition, even though they want them in school, we've got to transition them in to school. So, our parents know that we're doing everything possible. But most importantly, our teachers' voices are being heard and, and, and because they have to come back the next day and meet the needs of our kids and, and address the, the socioeconomics and the academics and everything we're dealt. Thank you. But it's, I'm gonna tell you, it's a great team, wonderful team.
And it's Dr. Mindy, I wanted to say something. Mindy, you want to go ahead?
Well, I was just gonna say, I guess for about every comment I've had that we should delay school, not have school, whether not face-to-face, I've had about two or three that, um, comments or remarks or emails that want their kids in school and want face-to-face. So, you know, it's kind of one of those situations where I'm not real sure, no matter what we do, there's going to be a group that aren't happy with whatever we decide. But the one thing I, I do, I have heard, and I just kind of want to be sure that we're all clear, is that we have done surveys. So, we, we base, some of our decisions based on the, the, the actual requests made by parents and teachers. And then also, I know that you've said that you've included the teachers or some teachers. I'm sure there's no way you can pull in every single teacher, but you have pulled in teachers to help kind of navigate some of these waters. And then as far as returning back to school and doing the transition, your, Dr. Hill, you said you included the principals and they gave input on the plan to, to do this. Is, is that right too?
Yes, yes.
So, the principals, we've started working on the frameworks for quite some time. There are six different frameworks that we've been working on. But then as, as just yesterday, we talked about the phase-in or the transition period that we're referring to of the four weeks. And we began discussing whether we want to use percentages of students. And if we wanted to use percentages, then how would we select those students? So, I charged them with all six elementary campuses getting together as far as principals are, are considered to design what they thought their plan needed to look like, as well as the middle school. And of course, high school is kind of separate. And it's, and just because of its magnitude. One thing that I did want to clarify, though, is if during the phase-in and President Fitch, you, you brought it up with, if there is a parent who wants their student to attend face-to-face and maybe their particular grade level has not been selected to phase-in, if they do not have the electronic resources or connectivity, then we do have to serve them in a face-to-face manner. So, I wanted to make sure that that point was noted because we can't turn any student away from a face-to-face. However, it is our full intent to limit the number of students on campus very strategically to run through some of these processes and protocols that have been developed to ensure that we keep the students and staff health at the, at the absolute forefront.
So, just to go back to my.
So, just to go back to my, kind of my question, I just want to clarify, we included input from teachers within our district, is that correct?
So, as of last week, yes, the principals were asked to, if they hadn't already, and most had, either visited with smaller groups of teachers, and they refer to them as their leadership team. Some refer to them as their guiding coalition. But then they were also encouraged to even broaden that, to include the parents. And we do have, yeah.
And then the principals came in, and y'all have discussed this, and they have been to this plan as well. And I guess where I'm going with that is you've got, you know, almost 300 people watching. And I'd be sure that, you know, we've been very clear in answering the questions and the comments and the remarks. So, that's kind of where I'm coming from.
And Mindy, right now, what's really exciting is we've gotten to the point that we're presenting the plan. So, now, our teams need to go ahead and broaden, and you heard Dr. Hill mention that. We need to broaden that network of communication because, and it's absolutely true. We do have teachers who are saying, "You know, I wasn't included." Well, you can't include everybody. But now, we've gotten to a point with school being out a little, we've got some cushion. But now, we've got to broaden that net. We've got to make sure that we have conversations with the wider scope of staff. And they're not on contract, so we can't force them to come in. That's why when Dr. Hill mentions they're inviting them, is we have to send an invitation. They're not on contract. So, right now, we're at the mercy of the folks coming back in and participating, volunteering their time. Now, as we get to staff development, as of August the 5th, the staff will be there. There's going to be very, very specific protocols and conversations and discussions about what we're doing as we move forward. But we're also not just delivering, we're listening to the communication that our teachers are going to give us at that point because they are doing unique things. They're moving groups of kids that we, as leadership, are not familiar with down the hallways and into different corridors.
Okay, Dr. Gromen, I have just one little thing to say. We talked about students and teachers, very important. But there's another important component, and they're with us today. The parents and Dragon supporters that we have are great. And we thank you so much for showing interest and support in this difficult time. And we thank you for those who will watch this in another time and be a part because we need each of us to work together to pass through these troubled waters. Thank you.
Any other discussion or questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move that we approve the calendar, but I was trying to find the actual words I'm supposed to say. I know that we approved the revised instructional calendar for the school year 2020 and 2021 as presented.
I'll second that.
All right, so we have a motion by Mrs. Winslow, a second by Mrs. App. Any additional questions or discussions?
I just want to say that presence of a principal at the meeting is most important because they have the pulse of their campuses.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Very good.
All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, sounds like it's a unanimous vote. Thank you all so much for that. Next item on our agenda is an executive closed session. The board will now conduct an executive session to discuss the items posted on our agenda pursuant to the following provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Act, and as allowed by Texas Government Code, Sections 551.071, 551.074, and 551.129. No voting will take place in the closed meeting. Any action the board wishes to take as a result of discussions in closed session will take place after the board reconvenes in open session. I will say, since this is by video conference, I want to add that we will not come back from closed session any earlier than 2:00 PM. And it is now 1:47 PM. All right, do we have everybody back? One, two, three.
Yes, yes.
All right. We will reconvene in open session, and it's now 2:48 PM. And I'll entertain a motion for the final thing on our agenda.
This is Mindy Winslow. I move that we adjourn.
Thank you, Mrs. Winslow. Do I hear a second?
Ms. Irvin, I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Reverend Irvin. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Everyone have a great day.
You too. Thank you.
Thank you.